I'd like to call the May twentieth, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees regular meeting to order. Before we begin tonight's agenda, I would ask that you all stand for a moment as we observe a moment of silence in memory of a teacher we lost recently. Ms. Dominique Walker. Ms. Walker was a Head Start teacher at James Island Elementary School. We extend our deepest condolences to her family and friends during this difficult time. Thank you. Ms. Watley, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Roberson.
This is a point of privilege. I just want to let everyone know that Ms. Waters is not here today because Ms. Dominique Walker was her daughter's babysitter. So please keep her in prayer. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
We will now consider the agenda as posted. Are there any objections or comments to the agenda? The floor recognizes Ms. Temple.
I would like to have item eleven D removed off the consent agenda because I have some questions. So I'd like to move that item D come off the consent agenda and be moved to Audit and Finance. Thank you.
There's a motion. Do I? We'd need a second. Second. There's a second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious what the question is.
Well, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no objections. If you could please amend. And I would request then for a motion to approve the minutes of the May. I mean, I'm sorry. The agenda for the May twentieth meeting.
Ms. Denny. I don't have the public comments yet. That's all I wanted to say.
I would appreciate a motion to approve the May twentieth twenty-four agenda with the amendment that item.
So move with amendment.
Eleven D is moved off the consent. And the agenda is approved as amended. You've all been provided with copies of the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four Board Minute Meetings, the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Committee of the Whole Minute Minutes, and the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Special Called Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any objections or corrections to the minutes?
I saw move. One quick thing. Ms. Trudy, they were. It's not that they're not present to vote. It's just that they're just not here. Not present to vote would be if they were here, but then going, yeah. So as of right now, our quorum is six. But I move for your motion.
Right. If there are no objections or changes, then the minutes are approved as presented. And we will move on to item two A. Special recognition. Ms. Denny.
Yes, sir. Chair Grabowski, Superintendent Huggins, thanks for having me today. National School Nurses Day was celebrated earlier this month. In honor of the occasion, I'd like to introduce Ellen Nitz, our Director of Nursing Services, to present today's special recognition.
Good evening, Board. Good evening. Today we're here because we have a very special recognition. First of all, I want to start with letting everybody know, in case you don't.
Thank you. That school nursing is really, really a tough job. You see anywhere from about fifty kids a day with chronic healthcare issues and, you know, involved that could be life-saving. In addition to a couple emergencies that could be thrown in here or there. So school nurses never know exactly what's going to be happening. So you really have to be invested in your students, your school, and your community to have a real impact. I have the privilege tonight to recognize one of our nurses that has invested her time and her expertise at Murray-Lussain. Julie McElroy has been awarded not only the South Carolina School Nurse of the Year, but she is also the National South Carolina School Nurse of the Year. So winning this award is no easy task. There's over fifteen hundred school nurses throughout South Carolina alone. So Julie has been a nurse for the past nineteen years, and we've been honored to have her as a school nurse for the past ten. And she's been at Murray-Lussain for the past four, right? No, longer than that, six. Okay? So, yeah. So Julie exemplifies the role of a school nurse. She not only cares for the students with the acute and chronic healthcare needs, but she works diligently with her school to promote health and wellness. Second page, I promise. She also holds the world's record for the most wellness points ever earned with the Boeing MUSC Wellness Award, which I might say that Murray-Lussain won last year. So congrats on that. She models a healthy lifestyle and enjoys volunteering in her James Island community, whether it's writing the health tips for the, for the parent newsletters or helping to pack up backpack buddies so food, so kids have food during the weekend. She always encourages everybody to get involved. So don't be surprised if you're walking through Murray-Lussain and you hear Julie say, make sure you're eating the rainbow. Or do you want to run? Do you want to do and join the recess run club? She's always trying to get people to participate. She knows that health, health and safety go hand in hand. So in this, she knows mental health is a big, big part of this year. So she created a zen den for her staff to be able to relax and to be able to gather their thoughts. And she also has a calming center for her kids to be able to go to when they need that moment to be alone. That's not, you know, that's not all she does. Of course, she trains over ninety percent of her staff and stops the bleeding in case we ever have a medical emergency, as well, as well as making sure that she has cardiac emergency plans in response to that. So she sets the bar really high. And silly her, I put more work on her. We send her new nurses all the time to get trained with the very best. And then in her spare time, because we haven't used up enough, she also sees some, some of the Charleston Southern University student, nursing students pass through too, and she helps to mentor those. So I know y'all have got a big board meeting coming up, so I'm not going to take up any more time. But I do want to say congratulations for being nominated the National School Nurse of the Year. It's absolutely wonderful.
Got it. Perfect. Congratulations.
Excellent. We'll move on to item three A, which is the public comments. And before we start, before I turn it over to Ms. Watley, I still would like to remind the public, it's important to note the public comment period is designated for constructive dialogue input that contributes to the betterment of our community and the topics at hand. We encourage speakers to express their views respectively and within the allotted time. As we anticipate a range of perspectives, I kindly request all speakers to adhere to these principles. Our goal is to ensure that the public comment period remains a space for open and productive communication. You plan to address the board during the public comment period. Please keep your mo-, your remarks focused on the relevant agenda items or issues affecting the district. The key word here is issues, not individuals. Ms. Watley.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. We have sixteen people signed up this evening to, for in-person public comments. The equal distribution of the time would be one minute eight point, or one minute point eight seven five. So unless there's an objection, I'm just going to move that we give everybody the two minutes. Okay. I'm going to call you up four at a time. When you approach the podium, please state your name and then go ahead with your public comments. So we'll start with Sydney Van Bullock, Steve Larson, Claudia Newbern, Cynthia Smalls. Y'all ready? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sydney Van Bullock. It's awesome to get two full minutes tonight.
Sydney, I'm going to get your name right one of these days, I promise.
That's really fine. So since we have two minutes, I just want to say that Ellen Nitz, who just presented that award, has taught me personally CPR more times than I can count, and she's incredible. So I just wanted to take that moment. I signed up today to speak on teacher salaries. And I'm also here representing Cajum Charleston Area Justice Ministry. But I'm going to start with teacher salaries. I don't know if y'all read the Post and Courier this weekend, but I think that one of the articles that they put out is really on point for this conversation. They stated that fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars is now considered low income in Charleston, South Carolina. And so as you continue your conversations around salaries, I just hope that you'll keep that in mind. And to, to speak to the district, moving forward, when we think about compensation for our classified employees, the market value values them under the low income bracket. So I'm grateful for what y'all have given so far or are willing to give, but just in years to come, we have to keep pushing forward. And to represent Cajum, I just wanted to re-present our asks. We know that there's been, it's been a tumultuous year, and you all have the opportunity to start making amends and healing with the community. So we are asking for an independent audit of both the board and the district. I know that that can be scary sometimes, but it's an opportunity to see, for everyone to see our flaws and to move forward together. And I'm about to run out of time, so I'll stop it there. But thank you for the time. Thank you.
My name is Steve Larson. I'm a resident of Charleston County and serve as the principal at RB Stoll High School. Good afternoon, Superintendent Huggins, Board Chair Grabowski, and members of the board. I'm here to provide you with a brief update on the progress being made by the D four Commission. As you might be aware, we are meeting regularly as a joint commission that includes members of City of North Charleston, community members, and school personnel. One of the highlights for me in participating with this group is how easy it has been to all agree on the children, that the children of North Charleston High School deserve our very best thinking and our collaboration to support their unique needs and set a vision for the future. This commission has been working faithfully to identify key strategies and investments that we believe will accelerate the academic achievement in North Charleston. From improving athletic facilities to land banking, community involvement, and increasing participation in the Center for Advanced Studies, our interests have been aligned and actionable. We've been thrilled to see that the proposed weighted school funding formula will bring over fifteen million dollars to our schools and are looking forward to the many positive outcomes in academics, community partnerships, and wraparound services as a result. Thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to sharing more with our superintendent and the mayor soon. Thank you.
My name is Claudia Newbern. I'm an Assistant Principal at RB Stoll High School and I serve as the Lead Administrator of the Charleston County School District Newcomer Center. I'm also a member of the CCSD in North Charleston Commission. The Newcomer Center serves about two hundred and fifty-three students new to the United States. We provide support services, transcript evaluations, shelter, English, and math classes, as well as English as a second language classes for our most needed multilingual learners. Additionally, we have another seven hundred multilingual learners at Stoll, the biggest population in the state, who while not considered newcomers, receive similar support services. When I began at Stoll High School in two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and ten multilingual learners. Now with over nine hundred, our responsibilities as educators are changing. We must teach with language development in the forefront and understand the complexities of language acquisition. I am proud to serve on the CCSD in North Charleston Commission and feel empowered knowing that my expertise in everyday work provide context and thinking around what we must do to meet the needs of our changing student demographics. From hiring more bilingual staff to ensuring that our community adapts and welcomes new cultures, there is so much work to be done. I'm pleased to see that this commission is making great, great progress and desires to do whatever it takes to promote equity and student achievement across all student groups. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Cynthia Smalls. I stand before you. My heart is heavy, but I thank God for this opportunity. Let me share something with you. Second Chronicles, chapter fifteen, verse seven says, "But as for you, be strong and do not give up, for your work will be rewarded." I bring you with that on behalf of my dear friend, little sister, Dominique Walker. May ninth, I had the opportunity to speak with her. She thanked me and Miss Travis. She said, Reverend Smalls, I thank you for advocating for teachers' pay. I thank you. She said, when I started five years ago, I worked Walmart and Kaleidoscope just to make ends meet, just to make ends meet. I said, Dominique, I will go down there every time I get a chance to advocate for teachers. Mr. Prentice, let me thank you. Job well done. Seventy-five hundred is better than five hundred. Amen, somebody. So we thank you for working in numbers, sir. Great job. Let me take this opportunity to thank you, Ms. Foxworth. I thank you and your staff. This morning, it was very tough going to James Island Elementary School, knowing that I will not get to see Dominique, someone who asked me and begs me to continue advocating for teachers and classified. And I'm going to do that. I'm going to do that. In memory of her, I ask that you, Mr. Grabowski, and your team, push it. Pass it through. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you. We have to make sure that we're doing what's right by our teachers and our classified workers. Please, in memory of Dominique, Dominique Walker, humble, sweet spirit kindergarten teacher at James Island Elementary School. Please, please, in her memory, let's push teachers' pay. Thank you.
Jamie George, Letitia Reed, Sean Lovely, Ben Shell.
Good evening, Board Trustees, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jamie George, and I'm a Charleston resident, retired educator. I spent sixteen years in the CCSD public school system. I am a parent and a grandparent of students who have attended our schools. I'm here tonight to talk about restoring trust. I have long been troubled by some of the actions of this board. The ensuing chaos, the loss of trust, and the damage done to individuals, to students, to teachers, and our community. On April twentieth, at the Charleston Area Justice Ministry near my action, the board was given a well-researched remedy, not only for restoring trust now, but also for helping to assure that this does not happen again. The remedy was to hire a qualified third-party agency to conduct an audit of the board's compliance with the policy manual and overall ethical governance, to act on those recommendations, and to ensure training is needed. When a system is in trouble, an outside expert can give a better view. None of us inside know everything. Those suggestions were firmly rejected. Why would any organization resist change and improvement? Or an expert voice from outside repair the damage, restore the trust, and ensure the future? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the CCSD Board. Thank you for your service and the opportunity to address you. I would like to briefly.
Before, before, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but before you go on, would you mind stating your name, please?
Yeah, Letitia Reed.
Thank you.
So I would like to briefly share my personal story in an effort to advocate, advocate for a fair teacher compensation. My name is Letitia Reed. I'm a Spanish teacher at St. Jones High School. Originally from Guatemala, I came to the United States in two thousand and two as an exchange teacher. My passion for education and my love for children motivated me to pursue a PhD in educational leadership at USD. While I was writing my dissertation, I became ill, which eventually led to a brain tumor diagnosis. Fortunately, the meningioma was benign and successfully removed. In an effort to pay for medical bills and a significant student loan debt, I applied for positions in administration for years until I finally gave up. Today, my teacher's salary is not enough to meet my financial responsibilities. Thus, I find creative ways to supplement my income by selling items on Facebook Market, renting my RV, renting rooms in my home, and renting my RV. Sometimes I even clean homes. Basically, recently, I even enrolled at Trident Tech so that I could postpone student loan payments that I cannot afford. This evening, I respectfully ask that you pass the proposed budget to alleviate the financial stress and struggles that teachers and classified staff like me may be facing or experiencing. Thank you for your leadership and continued support for public education.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean Lovely, and I'm here as a parent of a student in District Two, Mount Pleasant Schools. I wanted to speak to you regarding the salaries for the teachers, the staff. Basically, first, teaching is not a full nine-to-five job. Teachers are also school tutors, paper graders, lesson planners, crafters of class projects, mentors, and so much more. For those who feel that there should be a pay increase, who shouldn't, that not should be a pay increase, please consider stepping into the shoes that all, or wear the hats that these teachers fill. Teachers also work during the summer. They continue to tutor, run summer camps, continue to plan lessons for the next year, as well as taking care of their own families. They are not on vacation for twelve weeks. As a niece, a sister, a cousin of teachers, I've seen what they go through personally. The hours that they put in, the time that they give, in addition to their families, in addition to their own extended families. Having to give up visiting kids and nieces on their birthdays because they had to take a job running a summer camp. So in conclusion, I hope that the board considers the seventy-five hundred pay increase in favor of the ten thousand pay increase. Let's go for a ten thousand pay increase. If not now, then let's go ahead and try to go for that in the years to come. I hope that this cost of living will make it easier to live in this area. The, the cost of living has increased so much that we need this. We need this for our teachers. We need this for our students, and we need this for our community. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Shell, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I, this is my first time speaking in front of the board, and I am so honored to be here. I am a current senior at West Ashley High School. I am a teacher cadet under the amazing Sandra Cannon. And I am also an incoming teaching fellow in music education at the University of South Carolina. As I prepare for college in the fall, I am equal parts thrilled and terrified as I have watched these teachers that have encouraged me, supported me, and otherwise inspired me to pursue this career struggle to make ends meet in so many different ways. My AP psychology teacher, who despite having multiple roommates, has been forced to move home multiple times since I've been here for the past three years in order to keep up with rising housing costs. My band director, with whom it would be my absolute dream to work with one day after I achieved my teaching certificate, who routinely skips breakfast in order to keep up with the twenty dollars that he. who routinely skips breakfast in order to keep up with the twenty dollars that he keeps in his lunch budget because even with his wife, who is also an elementary teacher at East Edisto, they can only afford to put food on the table two times a day, not three. Last Thursday, I signed a promise letter at CCSD's Future Teacher Signing Day, and I, alongside my peers, who share a similar passion for education, were told that we are the future of our schools, the future of our children and their children, and the future of Charleston. But it's becoming increasingly apparent that it is much cheaper and much more convenient to praise our teachers than it is to financially support them. As it stands, I am left feeling less like our future and our well-being a bit more like a forethought. I remain hopeful that I will be able to achieve my dream and come back and work with my band director here in CCSD at West Ashley. And the biggest barrier, as it stands, to that dream is whether or not I will be supported by this district. Thank you so much for your time.
Before I call the, the next names up, Ben, we have a committee that's coming up soon that's gonna, I, I would like for you to apply for it. Ms. Denny, Ms. Huggins, would you mind? Thank you. So the next four, Author Lawrence, Abby Wilson, Yvette Campbell, Karice Broom.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, my name is Author Lawrence. And we observed the district last month, and the staff, it seemed like everyone was happy coming to work. They were cautious to everyone that came through, and seemed like they are ready to go to work. I've seen some of the staff in action. They're ready to go to work. You hired them and put them in the right place. Now, we hope that when budget time comes up, that you all pass the budget and give them the tool that they need to continue to move Charleston County School District ahead. Now, in this budget, they work hard to put this budget together. In this budget, everybody is holding accountable. We're not just throwing money out to these schools. We're holding the principals accountable, especially those principals at these accelerated schools. The things that they used to do and the money that they paid directly to people and indirectly to people, now it must go directly to the student. And now your staff and everybody is focused on student, not adult. Pay the teachers because you need qualified teachers, and if, if you're on the bottom of the scale, teachers not going to come. So pay them and let them come to these schools. Now, the money will be allocated to these schools. All these principals foot to the fire, then make sure that this money is wrapping around these kids. Too often, these same schools are always failing. Time for us to move those kids forward. And if the principals are not doing their job and not moving these kids up, get rid of them, put somebody in their place.
Hello, CCSD Board. My name is Abby Wilson, and this is my daughter, River Wilson. I'm a teacher and a parent in CCSD District Three, James Island. I appreciate and I'm so grateful for last year, or this past year's pay increase and bonuses. This means a great deal to me, both personally and professionally, as I am my main source of income for my family. I'm appreciative and grateful to have this opportunity to speak for a brief moment today about teacher and classified staff pay increase. Board, as you anticipate and consider the reading of the budget, I urge you to think about the positive effects that a step increase for teachers to forty, as well as the staff increase, sorry, I'm very nervous, for all classified staff would mean. I work closely with many teacher assistants. Often, they venture elsewhere due to pay, especially if they're supporting themselves and in their new career. I remember the days when I first started teaching in two thousand and five. I often had one or two jobs after school. This is before I had a daughter. This is exhausting, and sometimes, teachers, we don't have a choice. This increase would mean that teachers and educators perhaps, maybe, can only work one job. This means that maybe you could be more present and rested in the classroom. Also, this decision will have a positive impact on teacher retention and longevity for all educators. As a parent, I know I would love for my teacher's child to be only working one job, and that's teaching, and not feel the burden of increased home prices and the cost of living. And personally, as a teacher, I can continue to support myself and my family for years to come in CCSD. CCSD Board, you have this unique opportunity to trailblaze a path for both higher teacher retention and to support all its educators and students. Thank you so much for listening, and thank you to my daughter who stayed the entire time to come. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Campbell, and I'm here to acknowledge the seventy-year anniversary of Brown versus Board Education, where the issue of separate but equal was overturned, thanks to Thurgood Marshall and his team. And here we are, seventy years after, the students are still struggling for their rights. Every student should have the right to feel safe and receive a quality education. As a member of the Cajum community, I urge the board to have every student feel like they're receiving a safe and quality education. However, the moral compass of justice is still leaning toward injustice. So to ensure our students get the proper form of governance, we're simply asking if you would like, that we would like this board to consider an evaluation of an independent auditor to give a fair and unbiased assessment of the leadership according to their own policy manual. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Karice Broom, and I am an English teacher at James Island Charter High School. And I want to tell you two quick stories this afternoon. I don't think that I can top one of our former student, or one of our current students up here telling you on behalf of teacher pay, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what, what I came here to say. So first of all, I have been in the classroom, was in the Upstate for eighteen years. I taught there, and then I've taught here for nine years. And I can, I could tell you how difficult it has been to be a teacher and to, to experience that static pay scale, but to come to Charleston and see that very high cost of living, not to mention the recent inflation. But honestly, I want to speak to you more just on behalf of my profession. I'm not here to talk just about myself. So I have two quick stories. First of all, I spent the semester with a student teacher in my classroom. She was out of the College of Charleston. Her professors are telling me that that was the smallest teaching cohort that they have seen. And she happened to be the top student in that cohort this semester, secondary ed. But she is not going to teach in South Carolina. She's not going to stay here. She, you know, the discrepancy between teacher pay and the cost of living is just too much. Okay, so we're, we're losing her. My second story, though, is about a really close colleague of mine and, and also teachers like her that I teach with at my school. I know that she wrote to y'all tonight, actually. And she is facing the very real possibility of sleeping in her car, either the, you know, possibly next year. And that is, that is a real thing. Okay, so I want to just express my gratitude. Thank you for everything that you're doing. Please do as much as you can for teachers. Thank you.
And the last four is Jody Stallings, Heather Teems, William Hamilton, and Beth Dillon Koffer. I apologize if I said that wrong.
I'm Jody Stallings, Charleston County School Teacher and Director of the Charleston Teacher Alliance. I honestly have no idea what I'm going to say. People on the way up here were like, what are you going to say? I don't know, because this has never happened. Two years ago, when we started the Teacher Compensation Task Force, and we examined the cost of living in Charleston, and we found out that to be able to even remotely be financially sound, a starting salary of fifty-eight thousand dollars was required. I, I just thought, there's no way. That's, that's not possible. I've been in this district for over thirty years, and you know, you pray and beg for maybe two thousand dollars increase from one year to the next. So I just thought it was a pipe dream. It was a joke. But for the last two years, thanks to this board, all nine members of this board, Ms. Huggins, Mr. Brigman, Mr. Prentice, everybody who's been a part of the task force, and everybody in this community who's come out to support teachers, you have shown how much you value teachers. And I just thought it was going to be, we were just going to continue to watch teachers walk out of the door. Some of them do it because of conditions, but a lot of them do it because they can't afford to stay in the profession. It is becoming too expensive. And so I just expressed my deep gratitude for everything that you are doing, for the commitment you've had. Would now, I have to be clear, we're not there yet. Fifty-eight thousand dollars, though, is within visual distance, and I never thought I would see that. Thank you so much to everybody in this district and to everybody in the community who has supported our teachers and our kids and our classrooms. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Heather Teems, and I'm the art teacher at Maria Lassane Montessori. I would like to talk about the proposed increase for teachers and teaching assistants as well, and the hope for substantial livable wage to continue working for the children of Charleston is so important to the entire community. We are here to show gratitude for all of you and for the Teacher Compensation Task Force. So I asked assistants and teaching assistants and teachers what this proposed raise does for them. I got a lot of responses that my friend made me cut out because it was taking too long for me to read them all. But they were all great, but I just picked a few. So these are what I got. These raises will be life-changing. Ultimately, will enable us a better quality of life. I can help my son pay for college. Not have to reevaluate my life every contract season to look for a better-paying job when teaching is what I love. I can live independently of my parents and not have to rely on them any longer, and this is from a single mother. I have a lot of those at my school. I can stop skipping doctor appointments because I can't afford the deductible. I had one, really, that one put me down. You don't go to the doctor? No, because I can't afford the deductible. It would mean that we won't have to sell our house in Charleston this year. I can cut out one of my side hustles, one. I won't have to live paycheck to paycheck. I can start taking care of my mental health. Now I have to skip a bunch, but a lot of them said, buy groceries. Relieve stress on a personal and professional level, finally feel what we do is valued. Feeling that we are appreciated, feeling that we have hope. These, I'm going to keep going. These feelings are just the beginning of what these proposed raises mean to all of us. We can go confidently into the classroom to focus on the students every day and not have to worry about our own living situations and families because the children are the heart of our work in Charleston. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Hamilton, I am here on behalf of Diversity, which is a joint project of Low Country Up Is Good Political Action Committee and Defense of Democracy. A year and a half ago, Moms for Liberty claimed control of this school district because they endorsed five candidates for this school board. We have proved since then that this school district does not belong to Moms for Liberty or any religiously-based group, but it belongs to all the citizens. I won't relay the details. Everyone in this room has been through the nightmare and struggle, and everyone has their own perspective. Unfortunately, people looking at our city and its struggle have decided that this was not enough, and they are bringing something called Unity City to the Low Country this Saturday. The goal of this organization is to put every aspect of life-
I'm going to ask you to abide by policy and keep it about subject matter of the district.
Well, I'll be there.
Unity City is, has nothing to do with CCSD.
Uh, I'm sorry, ma'am. They intend to take over our school district. So it does. It's one of their express goals, and they're not going to do it because on Saturday, we're going to step up and challenge them. This time-
Mr. Hamilton, I'd like to remind you of the policy and keep it about the business on the agenda and the school district.
This is about the school district, ma'am.
On Saturday.
Ma'am, it won't go away. It didn't last time, it won't this time. A half a million dollars is gone because we hired a school superintendent, and we sent him away. These people do not mean this district well. We are going to stop them. They're not going to take over the Low Country's schools. It's government, it's art, it's culture, or anything. We will make a stand. You all have our information. I understand this is inconvenient, I assure you. I did not want to spend my weekend eyeing these people either.
You've, you've gone over the line, please. This is not a political rally.
I'm sorry, I was taught to speak this way at Wando High School. They told me not to bore people. They told me to be a citizen. They taught me to stand up. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent, my name is Beth Dillon Koffer. I am a resident of Charleston County. I have two children in Charleston County schools, and I serve proudly as a principal at James Simmons Montessori School. I'm here to talk about a couple of things. First of all, I am very pleased with this budget proposal. It is, it's unbelievable. Especially happy with the raises for our staff and for teachers. I had a conversation today with the teacher who's interviewed in Tennessee and Florida, and he's talking about leaving, and I said, hold fast, there's some proposed, proposed raises. And we talked about what those proposed raises would be, and he's like, I don't know if those can touch the other ones. So that's a true story, and I really hope that we can keep him. We also have a lot of classified staff in our building, and so this would greatly impact them. I'm also excited about the weighted student funding. So what that would contribute to our school would be a .5 literacy interventionist that would provide direct reading services to our neediest of students. It would provide an additional guidance counselor to provide college and career readiness for our adolescents. It would provide a .5 special ed resource teacher and a .5 special ed TA. So you can see that we really are trying to make the most with our money and make sure that the neediest of our students are getting those services. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm running out of time, is I was really proud to participate on the Calendar Committee for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, and I worked on the Calendar C. And I just wanted to share that I really think we put our heads together, and we came up with a great option that's going to allow additional breaks in the calendar. Staff and teachers need breaks, they get sick, just like our students do. And believe it or not, you might not believe this, but some parents take their children out in the middle of the school year for vacations. I know. And so I think that having those additional breaks built into our school year would afford everybody a better experience. Thank you so much.
Thank you. To summarize the online public comments, we had thirty-nine public comments about the teacher and/or classified compensation. We had one comment regarding failing schools, one comment regarding the Frierson Gymnatorium, with a total of forty-one comments. And with that, I will turn it back. Grabowski, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item four A, the Superintendent's Report. Ms. Huggins.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Good evening, Trustee. Thank you for being here tonight. We're gonna do a little more lengthy Superintendent's Report than, than not tonight to allow some of our departments to talk about- to allow some of our departments to talk about as we approach graduation and the, the school year end, the things that they've accomplished thus far. We're going to start, though, with a spotlight on CCSD, which features students at both the Military Magnet Academy. We'd hoped Dr. Perrinow and team could be here tonight, but they couldn't make it. I do think Mrs. Sheets is on the line. A presentation about leadership and how we have schools working toward instilling leadership capacity in their students. So Maggie, if you would please, spotlight on CCSD, Slide 2.
Our focus as a countywide magnet is on leadership. Leadership is taught and embedded in all of our cadet scholars, from sixth grade to 12th grade. Our middle grades actually take a leadership class daily. That leadership, that leadership class is taught by military professionals, either retired or currently active. Each grade level in middle school has two tactical officers that teach military science, military leadership principles, as well as protocols and customs that are supported in the military environment here. Our high schoolers are all enrolled in GRTC. We do have a regimental commander who has a staff of student leaders that is in charge basically of our military activities school-wide.
Back in my country, Jamaica, we would normally have class monitors, prefects, and it goes up to like the head, head student. So we would look up to those students. We were taught certain lessons and certain skills and certain core values as leaders. So coming here now as a teacher, I try to let them know the importance of being a leader.
Being a student leader, it means more like you'll have, it'll give you eventually, no matter how long it takes, it'll give you better discipline. It means that you'll be able to see and hear things through other perspectives now.
Military Magnet is a great opportunity to learn, not just academically, but learn more about yourself and learn more about the environment, what a proper working environment would be.
While I'm not a student leader or a black shirt, I still try to help lead my fellow cadets, whether it comes to helping them when it comes to PT or just help with assignments, anything of that sort. I still try to lead by example, too, by wearing my uniform correctly and trying to help the teachers and whatnot.
Military Magnet is the place to go, not just because of our military, pro, GRTC program that can help you for the military, but if the military isn't your thing, you can still come here to learn things about character, professionalism, leadership, things you'll need to, in order to progress in life, in order to climb the ranks of whatever you want to do in life.
So kids can get the full experience that they would have at their neighborhood or traditional school just in this military environment where we hone on and focus on developing character, citizenship, and their ability to lead.
As a leader in me school, we've seen a great transformation of our school environment. Our students are positive. They know how to set goals. They know how to choose strategies so that they can achieve their goals. The school is led basically by the teachers as they participate in leadership rallies. Every grade level has a month where they lead and they incorporate the habit of the month.
So the Leader in Me program at CPA looks like a system of highly effective practices in the classroom and in the school. That system goes along with our categories of leadership, culture, and academics. It empowers students to take charge of their academics and prepares them to be leaders throughout school, at home, and as they grow up and move into middle school, high school, and their adult lives.
Being a student leader has impacted my plans for the future because I can use habit three, put first things first. And if you work first and play, you can like go for college. And when you work like in high school and you're planning to go to college, if you get your good grades and you get the stuff done, you can probably have less classes inside college. And then if you have a big test coming up, you can study for that with your extra time.
Being a student leader has impacted my future by being able to sign up or being able to do different things, like being a tour guide. It really helped me bring out like my talker to person, which is being able to communicate more with others and not just at school, at outside of school as well.
One of my favorite things at that Leader in Me is students take charge of their academic progress and the progress of the schools. And they do this in a couple of different ways through the leadership, community, culture, and academics. So students have a leadership notebook. Every single student from grade CD all the way through fifth grade, they have a leadership binder that is catered to them, and they are in charge of that leadership binder. With this binder, they are able to track their data throughout the year from beginning to end. This could be reading comprehension. It could be different math skills such as fluency is what we were really focused on this year. With this leadership binder, they're also able to track their whigs or their wildly important goals. These are goals that they make that are personal and they are academic. So they're also bettering themselves as a person and socially emotionally.
One, leadership. Two, academic. And three, our culture. We take those three components, and they are integrated in everything we do at CPA. The classrooms have morning meetings to set the tone for the day, to help students emotionally, let students set their goals. And we set goals as a school. We have a focus. We look at our data, and we determine what is going to be our school-wide focus.
We chose this segment tonight so trustees and the public could see what we're doing in our schools to foster leadership. Just today, I was talking to a news outlet, and she said, so Anita, you all just, you help kids get smarter. I said, well, we do a lot more than that in our schools. We prepare kids for whatever they want to do after they graduate, which involves them being solid leaders, which involves them being able to communicate, collaborate, and think critically. Recently, the chief level officers and I met with principals in school data reviews. And as part of those reviews, we looked at the data of Mrs. Sheets, who's on the line now, and the data of her stu, the students at Military Magnet Academy. And when we asked, to what do you attribute the gains that we're seeing? Ms. Sheets said, leader in me. And so, Ms. Sheets, would you like to talk just a moment about the great things going on at CPA with this work and how you've seen it evolve over time?
Sure, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to address our leadership at program at Charleston Progressive Academy. This has been an endeavor. We started 11 years ago, and we have constantly been coached by Leader in Me. They have representatives that come three times a year. We actually start in the summer with all of our new teachers being trained by Stephen Covey's organization, not by us. So they get the same training that we receive firsthand. Then they are better able to implement it with our students. But it first starts with them knowing the eight habits and implementing that in their everyday life, in their professional life. So as a Leader in Me school, we continue to implement those eight habits in everything we do. And we focus on our big rock by looking at our data. And we, everyone knows what the focus is, what the goal is, and they write those goals in their leadership binder. But not only do the students have a leadership binder, our teachers also have one, as well as myself. So we know we have to be data-driven. But to make it a reality for our students and make it collaborative for them, they also have their leadership binders, and they get to set their goals in their own language.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheets. So if you haven't had a chance to see this inaction at CPA, we invite you to do so. Even if you're, if you don't serve that area, you are a member of the Consolidated Board, and you serve all students. So we hope you'll visit CPA with Mrs. Sheets or go out to Military Magnet. For those watching, maybe families, see, the Military Magnet Academy is a choice school to which students can apply to go. And so we hope that students will be interested in the leadership opportunities that Military Magnet affords. And we do plan to have Dr. Perrinow and some of his team here just to be acknowledged next month. So thank you, Ms. Sheets, for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Best wishes as you close out the year and finish up testing.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. We'll go on to the next slide. I want to make sure, trustees, I know over the sent to you slides, and you may have been able to view online, the North Charleston City Council meeting. I wanted to overview for you very quickly the types of information we provided City Council in the meeting on Thursday evening. Chief level officers and I, along with the principals of North Charleston, attended that meeting where we got to engage with Mayor Burgess and the City Council around the work. How are students doing? And so Maggie, the next slide, you'll see an example of some of the academic achievement and growth that we overviewed. Here you'll see last year's South Carolina Report Card ratings represented by the different colored circles and how those schools are trending. We're seeing more and more of those schools as we look this year at the formative growth trend into the upper quadrants, which is where we want to see our students, ideally over in the upper right-hand quadrant of both growing more and achieving more. So we outlined this data for all of our elementary and our middle schools in reading and math for our City Council members. And then the next slide, Maggie. We showed a breakdown of this year's projections in reading and math compared to where we were last year. So if you haven't had a chance to look at those slides yet, you'll see this information broken down by learning community for fall to winter growth. And you'll see significant growth in both elementary and middle for both reading and math. Double-digit growth, in fact, in each area. Then the next slide here, overviewed for North Charleston City Council, excuse me, a promise that we'd made to them to look into a highly engaging way and a research-based way to engage with students in a STEM initiative that would not only extend into the summer, but also into after-school. You may have read about the esports phenomenon across the nation. We're bringing that this summer to the Stahl High School feeder zone, Stahl, Zucker, and Hunley Park. This is a video game learning environment that's highly organized, that increases engagement, allows kids to have real-world application in a collaborative learning space with their peers that has proven quite successful. There are summer camps and after-school clubs. The principals at Hunley Park and Zucker, as well as Stahl, have all thoughtfully engaged with Rich Gordon and Dr. April Schammer around this, and we're excited to be able to kick it off just this summer. We also detailed, Maggie, in the next slide, for the North Charleston City Council and the mayor, the future plans for our capital program investments. The new Ladson, for example, is already under construction. The Stahl expansion is in design. The Deer Park Middle School expansion is under construction. The elementary and primary schools on the Lamb's campus, as you know, are in design. The new AC Cochrane is under construction, along with Morningside. And the Goodwin multipurpose room and car loop are in design. Onto the next slide here, you'll see our overview of the athletic improvements you approved back in the fall. All three bullets there are all under design with the D4 regional track, softball field and baseball field to come soon. Upgrades for the field complexes at Stahl, North Charleston High, Military Magnet, and Academic Magnet to come soon, and the athletic flex space over at Military Magnet, which it desperately needs. There's been a $1.1 billion worth of capital investment in the D4 schools, which outpaces that for our other averages across the district constituent-wise. The next slide, you heard Principal Larson and Claudia Newbern speak to earlier in the public comments. The work of the North Charleston Joint Commission is underway. We've been very blessed to work alongside Mayor Burgess and his appointees to develop an ecosystem of support or recommendations for an ecosystem of support for our students and our schools in North Charleston. I'm expecting in the coming months, I spoke to some members, a few principals today about this, both facility and capital recommendations, along with multi, multiple other recommendations regarding academics and wraparound supports to come from this commission in the coming months. And we'll be sure to keep you up to date as those things come to us as a senior-level team. The last two slides, just to give you a quick overview of how we wrapped up our time in North Charleston. We did so fiscally, looking at two slides Mr. Prentice and I put together, which details that about 21% or a little less than 21% of our funding in Charleston County School District originates from the tax base in the city of North Charleston. We service about 30% of the students in, across the district, excuse me, 30% of the students across the district come from North Charleston schools. And currently approximately 36% of our budget is expended there in the amount of about $250 million. The next slide details how we've heard and been asked to comment publicly on recently efforts to perhaps deconsolidate the district. And so the next slide details fiscally what that could mean for North Charleston, comparatively speaking, to the current investment that we have made in North Charleston schools. And I'm going to ask Mr. Prentice, if he would, to give you a quick overview of this slide and its meaning.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So as you heard Ms. Huggins mention, approximately 21% of our revenue originates from the city of North Charleston tax base. So as we were considering what this picture would look like, we wanted to show at high level what a potential budget scenario would be for a deconsolidation effort. So $75 million estimated local revenue collected in the city of North Charleston. And then we also considered that if 36% of our budget's expended in North Charleston schools, that we would contribute, for the purposes of mathematical calculation, approximately 36% of our state revenue. So that equals about $168.9 million. When you look at our budget this fiscal year and the investment in North Charleston schools, that number comes to about $252 million. And that does not include any of the cost of central offices. That's just the cost within the schools themselves. So no transportation services, no facilities, personnel, or anything like that, just, just school services. And that would leave you with a deficit in operations of approximately 80, $83.7 billion. And so if you look at what that tax base generates at 6% properties only, if you consider Act 388 and the overall mileage base, or overall tax base, it would take an additional 154.5 mils in the city of North Charleston's jurisdiction over our current tax levy to be able to support the operations at the current investment the CCSD is making in D4. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prentice. Before we go on, next, we sort of want to talk about the basis of the budget and how it's aligned with the goals. But before we move on, do you have any questions? I don't know if you had a chance yet to overview the slides that afforded to your attention. Do you have any questions about the work in North Charleston or the details that Mr. Prentice provided in regards to revenue?
Just want to make one point. There's not a question or anything. I'm not going to go to the financial part of it. Now let Mr. Kobowski get to that. I think one thing that we really have to stay focused on, we can say we, the, the funding issue, we can beat that any way we want, but we really have to start looking at the systemic issue of why our schools are not performing as well as we want them to and how they're growing right now. But like, there's something systemic that we could put all the money in the world up in North Charleston.
That's exactly right.
But we still have to look at that systemic issue of why our schools are not performing the way that they should be performing.
I'm so glad you said that.
That they could be performing. So how can we look at what Hunley or Lamb's are doing and try to pull even our high schools up? What has been the same over the last 10 years[1700.78] high schools up? What has been the same over the last 10 years in North Charleston or whatnot, at North Charleston High School or something like that, and say, all right, this is what we can do better or do differently inside of the schools. So they wouldn't be making this whole rationale if their schools weren't, if their schools were up to par. We can say the money is there. They, we know the money is there. But what can we be doing differently? So that's the only part I wanted to make. I don't know if you wanted to.
No, and, and I really, as we discussed, I think on the agenda of items, when you're dealing with legislative issues, I mean, this is really just noise between, you know, two opinions. So I really would like to get back on to, and I agree with Mr. Calhoun, you know, let's just look at what we have to do educating our students in North Charleston and, you know, let the legislator worry about.
Absolutely.
It's, I just, I think we need to move on from this issue, that's all.
And I think what we, I think what's really important for the board to know is we spent a lot of time around this work that's represented on the slides that we shared. And Mr. Calhoun, we've done a lot of work with principals trying to get to the root cause. And I think we've identified those, some of those things, abject poverty, lack of wraparound supports, lack of rigorous instruction, lack of a mindset believing that all children can. And so if we go on to the next slide, that's the basis of this year's budget. And what we've done in North Charleston to ensure that the supports are there to bridge the gap between what some schools have had, what some schools haven't, and what principals have identified as both the root cause and perhaps potential solutions for that through this budget cycle. So if you look at this next slide here, you'll see the basis for attaining the goals are all these budget decisions that we're making with the weighted student funding, but fortifying schools and the SRS sustainability, prioritizing the budget with teacher and classified salary increases, expansion of child development, another root cause, Mr. Calhoun, that we've identified particularly in North Charleston that has resulted in performance or lack thereof of students, the leadership pipeline and school allocations, a three-year financial plan which Mr. Prentice has mapped out to show that this is sustainable beyond one year as we work to engage stakeholders around this work, and then a formalized investment evaluation structure to help us determine, going back to what Mr. Calhoun said, what exactly has worked? Why is it working? How is it working? And what can we do to scale those things as we think about future generations and how we impact them? So again, this is the basis of what we're proposing in this budget cycle as we've worked with you over the last few months. So again, just a quick overview, if you have questions when you review the slides from North Charleston, certainly let us know. We're really enthusiastic, as Mr. Larson and Mrs. Newbern stated tonight, about the recommendations that will come from that task force as we look towards improving services for all, all kids in all areas of the district. The next few slides, we're going to review, Maggie, onto the human resources from some chief level officers as we look at the, the sunset of the year, as students will soon be graduating. We wanted to make sure you knew where we were in regards to wrapping up our support of schools for the current year as we look forward to the coming year and a summer of planning therein. So I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Brigman, really quickly to talk about the recent signing day. I think the young man that spoke earlier was part of that, wasn't he, Mr. Brigman?
He was. Is he still here?
Is he still here? No, he's not.
Okay.
I think he's gone.
So last week in the superintendents report, we talked about our pathways program in HR, which are all of our initiatives to grow our own teachers, whether that's a alternative route teacher, we would say, someone that has a bachelor's degree in chemistry or business and comes to back to, or comes to the classroom to be a teacher. So this is one of our several programs called Elevate Charleston that I mentioned last week, that grow in our own also includes our own students because we have 48,000 or so students in our system. And when you think about, I know one of the speakers mentioned the lack of, of students that are going through teacher ed programs. So we as a district are growing our own teachers. So this is one of our ways of growing teachers. So these are our students that are graduating. We're hoping to start working with students in the middle school level, middle school grade. But at this point, this is our, I think our fourth year of a signing day. We have actually 42 teachers, students that are going to four-year colleges to become a teacher. We had 32 that actually came to the event last Thursday. So we actually, like you would see with athletics, had a signing day. So each one of our students, and this was, we had students from all over the district, all of our high schools except for two. So this is, this was a really big year for us. But they all signed an agreement or a promise letter from us, the district, that we want them, when they complete their four-year degree, to return to Charleston and be a teacher in our classrooms. So it was a very exciting evening. It was, parents were there, grandparents were there, lots of pictures being taken. But it's amazing to know as you're walking into your four-year college, that you do have a job waiting for you in the community you grew up, if you so choose to return. So it was a very exciting evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brigman. Mr. Prentice will overview slides 14 and 15. Talk a little bit about payroll, accounts payable and procurement.
All right. So on slide 15 here, we have some payroll processing and accounts payable metrics. Just wanted to show you the comparison over the last few years of payroll in particular. Looking to outpace last year, at this point, we still have four pay periods to go to close out the year. But to date, we've processed just shy of half a billion dollars in payroll in the system. And so our payroll team works to process 24 on-cycle payrolls every year and approximately five additional off-cycle payrolls every month to be able to make up the, the full system's needs. On the accounts payable side, we are about $438 million in invoice processing for the year. And at the bottom, you can see the annual number of invoices that we've processed has grown year over year. This year to date, we're at approximately 56,000 invoices processed. We do about 80 check runs a year and our average processing time from the receipt of an invoice that's stamped for payment to the check going out is about five days throughout the system. If you go to the next slide, just in procurement metrics, number of POs issued year over year, we're looking to outpace the number of POs issued last year when we closed out June. We're just under 5,000. The number of solicitations that we've executed, right around last year's numbers at year end, still with another month to go, 124. We are now tracking contracts that we've executed and routed through the system. We've got some new technology that we're using, working DocuSign and some of those other elements, as well as having the contracts officer in place. And so we've processed over 120 contracts this year, and that doesn't include the smaller contracts that fall under the P-card threshold. Also, P-card transactions, we're at about 53,000 P-cards. And so you look at that, those numbers run closely in line with about the number of invoices that we process on an annual basis, and that totals about $43.2 million year to date. So we should slightly outpace our total P-card volume by year end. So just wanted to share some of the, the financial services updates by the numbers outside of the scope of the budget that we've been talking so much about. Thank you.
I want to acknowledge Mr. Prentice's work. He's been here two short months. We identified some long-term and short-term goals, and he has mastered them, getting significant systems in place to help streamline our work to best serve our stakeholders, who are those in schools and classrooms. The next few slides, sure.
Well, Mr. Prentice, how much are we paying on, on like check processing fees or even P-card processing fees? Or have, do you know of anything that can help us bring the number down, the, the funding number down that we have to push up?
So whenever we swipe our P-card somewhere, paying an actual transaction fee on it, although we have a way to track the transaction fees that we pay, just especially if it's lumped in on the receipt for the total of the transaction, I can say that we do get a sizable P-card rebate every year, which is nice. And that I believe would offset any, you know, per-transaction fees that we would pay on the transaction side. I think that number this year was close to $400,000 if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Mr. Prentice.
I have a question. You said it really quickly. So we now have a contract officer?
Yes, ma'am. We've made an internal promotion, and so we do have a contracts officer in place that's working to process contracts through the system and to ensure that everything's reviewed based on our, our scope in terms of condition requirements.
So our next few slides here are operations. Mr. Broe has had a banner year supporting kids. Mr. Broe, will you overview your slides very quickly?
Yes, ma'am. And it is three slides. I did have 20 prepared, but I didn't want operations showing off here. We just listed a few of the accomplishments. Nursing services, we had Ellen Nits and her team here earlier, putting glasses on kids, making sure kids are properly medically taken care of in schools. And the ED program has actually shown to save a couple of lives this year. Mr. Ridenbach here behind me took over the crossing guard program for the county. That was a seamless transition, and we've got 40 employees managing crosswalks at 55 schools. This is also a look ahead to the summer, and you can see Nutrition Services is prepared for a very, a very rigorous summer meals program to keep kids from being hungry. Planning Real Estate Department sold the old Hershey complex, giving one of our own charter schools a new home, but also getting funding for an athletic facility in North Charleston. Next slide, from the capital program, these are the four projects that were completed. Hershey and three projects within three existing schools, North Charleston High, Pepper Hill and West Ashley High, and they've got two schools ready for opening in the fall, expansions at C. Williams and Carolina Park. On the facility management side, very important to maintain school security. This past fall, we completed vestibule entrances, security entrances at three schools listed there, and also completed the park improvements. We'll have a ribbon cutting on Hampstead Park here in the next few weeks. And the last slide, more work from facility management. You can see highlighting the highest number of playgrounds, and we've had replacements here, 40 flooring projects, and this will be this summer our highest number of HVAC projects, thanks to approval of the FCO list from, I'm sorry, the sales tax list from the board trustees. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broe. Want to acknowledge Ms. Simmons too, completing her first full year officially as a CAO. She and her team have done a whole lot of good work around teaching and learning. I'm going to turn it over to her to overview some of the highlights from Learning Services.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And this is truly a fraction of the work that Learning Services leads. We really believe that we are the heart of the work at the district level. But nevertheless, I will not belabor all three slides, but hit on a few high points from assessment and evaluation. We are really proud of the work that was done to lead the district through the accreditation process with Cognia. A lot of observations, a lot of input happened at the district office as well as the school, and we're excited to hear back from Cognia soon. You will hear in a few moments, the SEC update is around the instructional framework. That was a collaboration between instructional programs and curriculum and instruction. And you all will remember the rollout, or the adoption rather, of the K through 12 ELA materials, a big deal. We are happy about the expanded offerings for gifted and talented artistic programs after school. And I want to shout out Elizabeth Updrew. She was awarded Gifted and Talented Coordinator of the Year. So congratulations to Elizabeth. We're really proud of her. You, you might recall the investment in letters training, the science of reading for all of our elementary grade teachers. We have the literacy department. We have trained 1,200 teachers so far in letters, and we continue to pursue that work. The Otis Office, Office of Translation and Interpretation Services, serving and supporting our multilingual families. We have increased access to the CCSD Language Access Portal for families. That's important work that we're continue to, we're continuing to make sure that our families have the benefit of. Back in July, the Federal Programs Department, McKenney Vento, under the leadership of John Cobb and Sonya Jones, held the first annual Serving the Unhoused and Underserved. It was a wonderful event. Finally, we want to, on the final slide, Charleston Virtual, the virtual program really supports a segment of our families who want the benefit of online instruction. And so a lot of work has gone into making that a robust program. Our Department of Exceptional Children, they've done a really considerable job implementing our disproportionality plan and making strides toward making sure students have access to in-person instruction and they're not being displaced unnecessarily. We're also excited about co-teaching for our Department of Exceptional Children. We're expanding that at the elementary level, making strides every day. And so that's going to be one to watch for the upcoming school year as well. And the wraparound services that Superintendent Huggins mentioned a moment ago, we've increased that to the tune of about 25% of direct services in the areas of mental health and substance abuse. And finally, for restorative practices, about 75% of our schools are active in terms of making sure that the learning environment, which you'll hear about in a moment as well, when I do the SEC segment, the learning environment is suitable, appropriate and viable for our scholars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Like Ms. Simmons said, in the SEC portion tonight, she's going to overview those big rocks and where we are in regards to the instructional framework, PLCs and restorative relationships with kids. She and her team have done a remarkable job helping propel that work forward this year as we've worked with teachers and as with school leaders, helping grow them, which is evident in that last statistic there. Maggie, thank you. Mrs. Hampton couldn't be here tonight due, due to a personal commitment, but she is committed to working with the board and Mrs. Watley specifically as the policy liaison to conduct a comprehensive and systemic review of the policy manual this year to help update policies as needed, as guided by the board. And so her team, we're excited to have our own staff and providing legal guidance to us. Next slide, Maggie. Mrs. Denny, we'll review very quickly some communication metrics today. Ms. Denny?
Thank you, Superintendent Huggins. So we like to think that we provide great service if you don't know we're there and didn't know you needed us in the communications office. So I took a second to just compile some of our metrics, where we are at this point in the year. We've proudly, Stephen Wyatt, our webmaster and social media guru, has posted over 700 district-initiated Facebook posts celebrating accomplishments and achievements across the district. Andy Pruitt leads the work in our media inquiries and responses. He's fielded almost 500 of those. Ty Drayton leads the work of mass distribution of information. Anytime you hear, this is the Office of Strategy and Communications calling, that's Ty's voice. And she's delivered almost 250 of those. We've had 230 internal service request forms. They're divided evenly amongst our team. You all know Todd, who's sitting right in front of me from Video Services and his partner Mike. We couldn't do so much without them. Lauren Gandy divides those up masterfully across the, across the department. Maggie Dangerfield takes the lead on many of our superintendent's appearances, and she's also the lead on our boardroom management during meetings. So Maggie's always right there behind the scenes. Stephen Wyatt and Sully Witty have led over 26 unsung educator features. Maggie's also stepped in and led 30, 23 roundtables and advisory groups. And then Maggie, Mike and Todd have all split the work of developing 10 spotlights since just this November. Maggie has single-handedly led nine Regional School Improvement Council collaborations, seven Board of Trustees Special Recognitions. Lauren helps me with that. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the constituent board work led by Ms. Tanya Meats, and our FOIA work led by Ms. Shaniqua Gold, and the work in D23 led by Ms. Tanya McIntyre.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. So as you can see, we've worked really hard to strategize a lot of the work in service to schools and in service to children throughout the course of the year. We're looking forward to graduation, which we know you'll celebrate alongside us in recognition in just a few moments. But Mr. Chair, that's all we have this evening for the superintendents report. Certainly open any questions you or other trustees might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Huggins. Are there any questions, Ms. Huggins? With that, hearing none, we'll move on.
When are we anticipating hearing about the Cognia report?
Mrs. Simmons, do you have a date for that? Mrs. Roberts?
I just asked the same question last week because I'm ready. I'm curious. But I had a conversation last week with Buffy Roberts and A&E, and we won't know until after their board meeting, which could happen summer or early fall. So it'll be a minute, but nevertheless, we are encouraged and we, we feel good about it.
Second question I had is with the virtual learning, is, are there teachers associated with the virtual learning?
So we have two programs, the virtual program I referenced in the slide deck, but we also have the partnership with Low Country Virtual, where we do have teachers who contract with Low Country Virtual. They are originally ours, and then they make a decision to contract with Low Country Virtual to support our virtual program. Robin, you want to say anything additional?
So we are a franchise of the state of South Carolina, Virtual SC. So we offer, we offer courses through their platform. So we have that, and we have teachers of record here. We have teachers that teach direct courses. We also have Edgenuity, which is for initial credit and credit recovery, which we have teachers of record who are our teachers here in Charleston.
All right. And when the virtual program is used for disciplined students, is there a teacher with that also?
That, that's a separate program.
Dr. Coakley?
Yeah. Thank you for asking. The temporary virtual program is separate from the virtual program that we're discussing on tonight. So last week, when I presented, we talked about TVP that's in lieu of a suspension while scholars are waiting for that disciplinary hearing. So if we didn't have the temporary virtual placement option for students, then those students would remain in out-of-school suspension. As far as your initial question, are there teachers? Yes, we have two certified teachers. One teacher is definitely Multi-Cat certified along with other areas. Also have the principal and special assignment available for our two teachers who oversee the program. And you'll be happy to know, I shared with Superintendent Huggins, that I met with the State Department on today regarding our temporary virtual placement, and that went very well.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley.
And the third question I had is around legal services. You're talking about a systemic review of the district's entire policy manual. I know that the Cajun group has been interested in that, and I'm just going to make a comment that I hope that representatives of that organization will be invited to, to contribute.
Thank you, Dr. Temple.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 5A. It's graduation time. And don't we know it.
Mrs. Denny, we'll turn it over to you.
I probably should have used the portable mic. Chair Kobowski, Superintendent Huggins, tonight graduations are quickly approaching, and our trustees, along with the graduates and their families, are looking forward to marking the important milestones with our graduates and families at each of the upcoming ceremonies. Today, we pay special tribute to our graduates at this meeting. Today, we pay special tribute to our graduates at this meeting. Trustees, will you gather at the front of the dais and take a group photo with the graduation time sign for the South Carolina School Board Association?
Yeah, that looks good.
It's always crooked.
Thank you, trustees.
On to item 5B, system priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. In collaboration with Mrs. Bailey, the system priorities update has been developed by Mrs. Simmons' office tonight to give an overview of the three priority areas this season, which are the instructional framework, PLCs, and restorative relationships. And so, Ms. Simmons, thank you for your leadership around this. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Very well. Thank you so much. I promise this will be short and sweet for our SEC segment tonight. We wanted to wrap this year up as we look to close out 2023, 24, the way we began it with a focus on our priorities. And so today's SEC segment is intended to speak to those big three rocks. You heard Ms. Cheats speak about the big rocks and frame how we progress this year and then set us up for the upcoming school year. So you have been briefed on the instructional framework in the fall, restorative practices in the fall, as well as our work around PLCs. But you've received all of those independently. The goal and the task tonight is to show the relationship, how they are interdependent, and feed one another. Maggie, thank you. So the big picture, as it relates to academic, behavioral, and socio-emotional support rests in our MTSS structures, multi-tier systems of support. But relative to these three priorities I just named that we identified last summer, the instructional framework really is the anchor where both the PLCs and restorative practices reside. So as highlighted, the big domains, one, learning environment, planning, instruction, and of course, assessment, makes up our instructional framework. We've done a lot of work from the initial rollout over the summer to make it more robust. We have received lots of feedback from various stakeholders so that we have a new and improved instructional framework to share with our scholars. And so the idea is to have a common roadmap for all educators in CCST, which ensures that consistent, insisting on consistent instruction across the board, whether we're in an elementary school, a middle school, or a high school, we can guarantee, we can count on, we can depend on solid instruction happening across the board. And so on the next slide, you'll notice the inputs. Here's just a snapshot of what we did to make this process that much stronger for our school teams. We heard from over 52 leaders in focus groups. We convened principals, coaches, district leaders as well to make sure that everyone's voice was at the table and we got the benefit of hearing different perspectives. And so that's just a snapshot of the next slide, Maggie. Thank you. There you go. That just paints the picture of the work that instructional programs and CNI led to make sure we had a thorough, a thorough understanding of where this work should reside. The next slide really lifts up restorative practices as one of our big priorities for the school year. You see learning environment. That's where the 75% of active implementation from schools. We made some progress this year. We're excited about that. The team led by Lisa Allison hosted, sponsored, and facilitated 30 training sessions. They are at the ready when school teams are in need of staff listening circles, student listening circles, or any type of restorative conflict circle. And so you can see they've been busy. The goal for next year is to continue with training and onboarding, coaching, and facilitating all of the requests that we generate from the schoolhouse. Maggie? And then the PLC work led by Dr. Williams. So this is heavy work. It takes a lot from school teams to embrace. And we are at a place where many schools are full force. But we still have some schools that are in the beginning stages. And so we're proud that last summer, we were able to train, we were able to train all of our principals as well as the school-based coaches and some of our district-level coaches. And so that PD during the course of the year with one of our partners took the form of office hours. We had job embedded professional development. And what we learned during the course of the process is we have some school teams really good at this work that we could leverage in terms of teaching other school teams. So for the upcoming school year, we think it's prudent and best to focus on our district instructional specialists to ensure that we are building capacity in the ranks along the way from the district office to the schoolhouse. We will have that training base so that the work continues. And so I promised, short and sweet, those are our system priorities for this year and what we expect to carry into the new year along with system-wide coaching as an approach as well. Thank you.
Cool. I'll see Mr. Grabowski here. And I honestly don't know who our vice chair is. I'm going to go ahead and take it. Do you vice chair? Oh, yeah.
I'm going to open it up to questions at this time. I'll start, I'll start with Ms. Bailey.
Yes, my question is, are all schools across the district active in the PLC trainings?
So that's what I mentioned a moment ago, Ms. Bailey. So all schools have been trained. All school teams have been trained. The level of implementation is different from school to school. So that informs us in terms of what should their support look like. There are some schools who may be at a four. They understand the work. They can lead the work without any influence from outsiders. But there are some school teams who would admittedly explain to you that they are still in the beginning stages. And so like we have with the restorative practices, three-year implementation plan, that's the charge of our team. Dr. Williams is leading it to understand where each respective building stands in terms of what their needs are so that we can then work to supply the correct training and professional development. So all are using it at some level, all not at the same level though.
Yes, thank you.
Was that it? It's Bailey? Mr. Collins?
Yeah, real quick. And I know you mentioned this one time before, but can we talk about the assessment for learning versus the assessment of learning?
Right. So assessment, when we think about teaching and learning, a lot of times we ask teachers to start with the end in mind. So assessment of learning, we're taking a look and appraising, evaluating what has already been taught. But assessment for learning drives and informs practices. And so let's think about it this way. If you're a teacher, because you are, and you teach a lesson, at the end of the day, you give a formative assessment to determine who has it and who doesn't. Well, those checkpoints, those quick checks, those easy checks for understanding will tell you tomorrow where you need to guide and take your instruction. So that's what the reference of assessment for learning and assessment of learning is speaking to.
Thank you.
Anything else? Dr. Temple?
Just, I'm excited about these big rocks. I mean, I know that from practice, these are critical. The instructor framework is critical. Schools and teams working within their PLCs is just, it's so critical to really look at the data and understand where children are learning and what teachers need to know. And of course, I'm a big fan of restorative practice because the important part here is the learning, what the learning community is like. And when teachers and students have wonderful relationships with each other and the students know how to resolve conflict, it makes all the difference in school. So thank you for these three big rocks. They're really important and I can't wait until we see 100%.
Yes, yes, that's the goal. That's our intention.
Thank you.
Are you, Mr. Temple? I'm done. Mr. Robertson?
I would just ask Dr. Williams if you would, with this, make a ledger. I forgot with BDISs and DDIs. I know those are all your acronyms.
So district instructional specialists are the instructional coaches, if you will, that support CNI. And DDI, data-driven instruction, is a component of the professional learning communities.
And how soon should we expect the rubric for the PLCs?
So we have one in progress that we used to determine if principals in schools felt like they were implementing at a high level. So at the last lead meeting, we administered that to principals just for them to have the ability to self-assess. You know better than most how well you're doing at a skill. And so we already have it and we're using that to inform the professional development that Dr. Williams will organize for us on next school year.
Mr. Robertson, is that all? Ms. Simmons, would you, the question that I have is, would you expand a little bit on the professional learning communities? Exactly who comes to the table with that and exactly the function of it?
Sure. So ideally, the principal, the in-house, meaning school-based instructional coaches, and of course, the teachers. That's just their time to unpack standards, examine student work, look for gaps in student learning, and then make a plan. Make a plan to reteach, make a plan to address the gaps. And so we think that time is critical. We used to call it teacher curriculum team meetings. It's evolved into professional learning communities. Now, we make up a professional learning community, but the reference here is simply about the time, the habits, the practices we invest in as professionals to get better at our craft. So it really is simply about trying to refine teaching and learning practices for the benefit of our scholars. And so you will see them literally creating charts and talking about what does a scholar need to know and do to master, to say that you've mastered a standard. There are some basic things you need to know and be able to show as a student. And you might take it lightly. It helps the teacher. It helps the practitioner to define those things before they enter, before they enter the lesson. So we're not taking anything for granted about what should happen during the lesson, what students should be able to receive at the conclusion of a lesson. We've prescribed it. We've planned for it. We've anticipated everything that should happen during the course of a lesson's delivery. Now, now, Dr. Williams, you might want to come to the microphone.
That's pretty good. So is this also where you take like the testing data and are able to break it down student to student and customize?
Absolutely. So we're looking at student outcomes, student data points. We're looking at class size, an entire class. We're looking at school data. But we're also looking child by child by child so that we can come up with a plan, a respective individualized plan for every student in the building. And so a lot happens during PLC. It's protected time. Many principals asked, will we continue to make that investment so that they can plan for substitutes like we did this year? They value it that much.
I like it. Thank you. Mr. Grabowski, I just opened it up for questions while you were out and you're the only remaining trustee.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, we will move on to item 6A, the Audit and Finance Committee. First item on the agenda is for a motion to approve a replacement of the COCS member. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Have a second?
A second.
Chair will open up the floor for any discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will put the motion to vote. And the motion passes. Moving on to item 6B, which is on the floor, is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put the motion to vote. And the motion passes. Onto item 6C, which is the motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution.
Don't move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move the motion on to vote. Please vote.
I do have a question for Mr. Barrowey. I'm not technically not supposed to while we're voting, but I am curious, is this going to address the, hate to open this can of worms, but is this going to address the issues at White Sign?
I think we're out of, I think you need to hold off on this. I think we're already on the line of voting. The motion's already passed.
I still have the question.
Now we can ask for a clarification.
So I've got Mr. Aman on the line to provide any additional information, but this project will replace the three dedicated outdoor air units that have been causing us some consternation over this past year. We've made a lot of repairs to those. We're looking at replacing this a year or two ahead of schedule. So it is, it is, will improve the indoor air quality for the school on a consistent basis.
Thank you.
Onto item 6D, which is the fixed cost of ownership for the fiscal year F-24 budget reallocation before the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put the motion to vote. And the motion passes. Onto item 6E, which is the 2024 Laura Brown Fund Request Distribution before the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one thing. Let's continue to work to get our scholars prepared so more schools can take advantage of this fund. We continue to get the same exact schools over year after year. I want to see some schools in North Charleston, outside of academic magnet, be it Stoll or North Charleston, West Ashley, of course, but in other schools going down. I want to see some other schools on this list next year.
You're here.
Ms. Temple?
You're here.
Ms.? Any further questions? Hearing none, put the motion to vote. And the motion passes. Onto item 6F, which is a motion to approve the first reading of the F-2024 which is a motion to approve the first reading of the F-202425 Budget Board Meeting. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second?
I have a question.
I'll second it.
The board will open up the floor for discussion. Ms. Dr. Temple?
Yes, thank you very much. The budget can still continues to concern me. As I receive emails and tonight we heard again stories that are real for our teachers out in our community. And so I would be neglect in my advocacy for our teachers and classified staff if I didn't say that I would like to have us, to have, I'd like to move to have our staff provide a budget proposal that includes a millage option that allows the teachers to have $10,000 added to the salary schedule to step 40. So while we're moving forward with the budget that we have, I think it is apropos for us as a, as a board to also have the consideration of what would it mean to our community to have the $10,000 salary and what would that millage be? So that's the intent of a motion I would like to make. And the motion is to have staff
There's already a motion on the floor.
I don't think there's a motion on the floor. Yeah, the motion on the floor is to prove the
There's already a pending motion that's been seconded.
Yeah, it's already been seconded.
Maybe you could ask the district
Mr. Parvatarian, I don't think, I think once we have to vote on the motion, it's already on the floor.
You could stack a motion.
Is the motion already on the floor, correct?
It's been seconded.
Okay, there should be a vote on that motion.
First and then what we can do.
And I, and just for further discussion, I, Mr. Cowan, you can correct me on this one too. I think this is an item that can be brought up at Audit and Finance. A motion to Audit
This motion is just for the first reading.
Yeah, this is only for the first reading, correct?
So, yes, this is for first reading. And Mr. Prentice, as we know, as we move forward to the second reading, things can change, but for the first reading, it gets on the floor. We go through Audit of Finance again. We have the second reading. We have the budget workshop or the hearing.
I just wanted to ensure that, that we've got something in place that would, that, that becomes an option for us.
Right. So with the, with the first reading, having it on the floor, then we can move forward to start making any changes that need to be, that need to be brought forward. Be it a millage change, be it a thing, but that's if anything goes forward. We have to have the first reading on the table so we can get to that part.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to put the motion to vote. The first reading of the budget passes. Onto item 7A, I'd like to
Motion to convene an executive session.
For a motion to convene into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in executive session. On executive session due to the amount of student placement appeals, foreign exchange requests, and other legal matters that are on.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are back in public session. Moving on to possible actions of executive sessions, we'll move on to item ten A.
I move to overturn the constituent board's decision and send a student to the IAP team for placement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Turn down, move the motion to vote.
Prefer to IP team for placement. She voting. Oh. Now she left.
Pretty, Mrs. McKinney has asked to vote via text.
I.
Okay.
That's, that's on you. I don't know.
Mr. Kelly says he abstains to a.
Abstain and stays.
I understand. I understand from that state.
I don't know how we. Can you look into that as far as our? Policy.
Whether texting, whether electronic texting.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, can you weigh in on that?
I'm looking.
My understanding is that there's one member.
One member wants to vote by text.
By text, which is to me and my just thinking is tantamount to an oral declaration, which I believe you all would allow.
How is that foible?
I'm sorry.
How is that foible? We can hear Ed. Miss, um, she's gonna be texting Ms. Denny.
How is it foible?
Yes, how will we actually be able to see what she's putting through, whether it's on board docs? We can hear Ed. Because she called in so we can hear her voice.
I don't think so. I think, I think she must be traveling or something if she's not calling in. Yeah, but.
I think her communication ability is limited to text. Which.
How do you, how do we confirm?
It appears that there's a text thread that Mrs. McKinney has reached out to Mrs. Denny.
Mr. Johnson, are texts considered like admissible in court?
Do you see what my issue is?
I see.
It depends upon the particular circumstances, but as a general matter, a text is, can be admissible.
To.
Evidence, if you will.
Yeah.
But we needed to, can she, anyway she can text on Zoom to where the public can see this. Nobody's going to FOIA Mrs. Denny's, um, uh, cellphone. We need to be able to see her vote or hear her, uh, hear her vote. And I'm not complaining or any, I just really wanted to make sure that this is up and up.
Well, that's why we're asking general counsel.
And, and my, my concern, my concern with the text, I know we have a, an apparent thread going, but I, my concern with FOIA would be how do you confirm that that's actually Ms. Kenny who's making the text?
That is coming from her. Is that your concern?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm, I don't want to get into FOIA issues.
I can hear Ed. That's fine.
Right.
Ms. McKinney, that's completely different.
What does the thread say? Um, Pam McKinney?
We can verify the phone number it's coming from.
I just think to err on the side of caution.
Keith, we can verify the phone number it's coming from.
I'm waiting. Uh, I will go by whatever legal counsel does. I understand.
It's, it's a fairly close question. And if the, if the primary concern is to have some evidence, some proof that it's coming from her, which I suppose would be the issue if we wound up in some sort of litigation, so to speak, or dispute about whether or not the text is legitimate, the prudent thing would be not to accept it.
Mr. Johnson, would it be reasonable to accept the text as voted tonight and then validate that when Ms. McKinney is available to either a phone call or face-to-face confirmation that she in fact voted the way that she is, that is being purported that she voted?
Well, that would, that would certainly be one way of validating the, the text message. If, if the concern is that at some point there may be a re- an allegation that the text was not legitimate.
Right.
So to speak.
Yeah, I don't want, for the record, I don't want anything to do with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Denny?
I was gonna offer that I could come with my cellphone and sit next to a trustee so that I'm not having the trustee necessarily text back and forth, just anything to aid in transparency.
Screenshots or something of it.
I'm, I'm sorry. My, my experience is to unfortunately to go and be conservative with this, not be liberty.
Ask her.
I just with FOIA and the issues that we've had with FOIA, I do not want to open up any opportunity as to whether we're right or wrong.
Vanessa.
Don't feel comfortable.
If she has access to wifi, she can do a wifi call.
Yeah.
Yes ma'am, I'll check.
It may be, it may be defensible, but there's enough concern I, I'm hearing and I think, you know, if you were to put odds on it, it may be a fifty-fifty proposition.
And that's not enough.
Yeah.
The US Attorney doesn't do anything else for a hundred percent sure.
So probably the prudent thing I, I, I would offer would be not to accept.
I'm sorry, I have to.
Under the circumstances, yeah.
I have. But if she can call in.
If she can wifi call.
Yeah, that's different. But let's, 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 let's move on with these. Well. I want to stop this. It's getting late.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, unless we can find a better way of confirming. Move on to B.
I move to uphold the constituent board's decision.
Second.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move. The motion to vote, please.
I'm, I'm thinking.
Do you have a vote?
Okay.
And the motion passes on to item, uh, ten C.
I move to overturn the constituent board's decision and place a student at Turner Point Academy.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll move the motion on to vote. And the motion passes. Item on to ten D.
Move to uphold the constituent board's decision.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll move the motion to vote. And the motion passes on to item ten E, the foreign exchange student request. Academic magnet.
I so move.
Second.
Second.
And this, uh, let me, let me go back and make this clear.
Are we moving to confirm or?
Yeah, we need to, we need to clarify this motion. The motion is to allow the foreign exchange student to enroll into the academic magnet high school for the entire twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year school year.
If they.
That's it.
No, Miss Ashley doesn't. And the years, the years wrong.
The discussion is that it's, that it's clear that it's for the twelfth, our policy is that it's for the twelfth year, school year, twelfth grade.
Because that's the only, because academic magnet, so they're to get into and a lot of our kids that are turned away. And twelfth grade is the only place that has, usually has openings. To make it fair for everybody, but that's come before us before, that's what we've done, we've all included in the motion.
I'll accept a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Please do. Darren's gonna do a friendly motion.
Well, I, I made a friendly amendment and Mr. Calhoun accepted it to include the stipulation that it's for a senior year for twelfth grade.
And the motion passes on to item, uh, ten F, the foreign exchange student request to Lucy Beckham slash Wando High School.
I move to confirm the student, uh, foreign exchange student for Wando High School.
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion we've moved to vote. And the motion passes autumn, on to item I, uh, ten G, which is a motion to allow foreign exchange student enroll into West Ashley High School in the eleventh grade for the first semester of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion we've moved to vote. And the motion passes on to item ten H, which is to allow a foreign exchange student to enroll into Wando High School in eleventh grade for the entire twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion brought to vote. And the motion passes on to item ten I, student transfers appeal. The motion before the board is to take action on the student transfer appeals to approve. I mean, it's, the motion for the board is to approve.
You want to just let Dr.?
Yeah, Dr. Temple, do you want to make the motion so you can describe exactly?
Okay. The motion is, the first motion is to uphold the constituent board's decision, making the students ineligible to transfer for student applications. And we have applications five, seven, eight, nine, ten, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-one.
It was.
She said she has it.
You have it.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I would just like to say that, um, I think it's time for us to review these policies. Um, if we continue down this, um, track, our community, smaller community schools, um, will never increase their enrollment because, um, there are ways for them to get around. So it's time for us to look at that. I am concerned about St. John's and Baptist Hill, um, and students being able to transfer, um, and we'll never be able to grow our community schools.
Mr. Calhoun?
I look forward to, again, helping with this, uh, closing these loopholes and, um, I hope that the district actually takes on having the constituent boards work on if they see these loopholes more than anybody else. Um, so let's definitely work with the constituent boards about what we can do to change these, uh, change this policy.
I'd like to make a comment.
And I concur because it really is important for us to, um, keep developing our neighborhood schools.
Ms. Watley?
Um, I just want to go on the record. Uh, whereas I support the building of community schools, I also support, um, true school choice and the parent, parents. Whereas I support the building of community schools, I also support true school choice and the parent, parents' rights to be able to choose a school where their child could excel. I think parents know best what's best for their children, especially if it falls in line with policy. So just surmise to say I support school choice.
Ms. Bailey?
I do support school choice, but I also want us to be able to upgrade our policies to make sure that we are in compliance.
Mr. Kelly, do you have anything?
What Ms. Watley has already stated.
And I, I just want to go on record, I also agree, I think the policy needs to be looked at. While I have mixed feelings on school choice, I do think that this is one of those policies that really has to be looked at. And I do think a parent does have a lot to say into where their, their child should go to school. But I, I think it has to be for the right reasons. Anyway. With that, hearing no further discussion, we'll bring the motion up for vote. Staring.
It's late 30.
And the vote passes.
We have a second motion.
Second motion, Ms. Dr. Temple.
I move to reverse the constituent board's decision-making. The students eligible to be included in the lottery were available seats at a school. The numbers are one, two, three, six, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 18, 20, 23, 24, 30, 32, 33, and 34.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Ms. Kelly? Hearing none, we'll take the motion to vote. And the motion passes. I want to thank Dr. Temple for all the work you did on this. I mean, it's just. It takes someone that really has got to have.
I do have to thank Mr. Olson for his help.
You're not thanked, yeah.
Sorry about that. Okay, we have a third one.
Dr. Temple.
It's late 30.
It's getting late. All right. I move that we place qualifying CCSD employees at requested schools until space prohibits such placement, unless space prohibits such placement. Thank you.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Hearing.
Ms. Trudy. I'll second it.
Let me give the rationale. Okay, the rationale is during the summer, as new employees request transfers, this will authorize staff to process their application to expedite registration, registration of their children to their desired schools.
Any further discussion or rationale? Then we can bring the motion to vote.
I support the school choice for all.
Ex qualifying CCSD employees. That reads a little differently. I know.
And the motion passes. On to item 10J, there's a motion before the board to approve the above referenced list of hearing officers for the 2024, 2025 school year. Have a motion?
I so move.
Second. Any discussion? I think this is another one where we need to really look at the policy of how the names are brought to us for considerations. We can add this to the long list, Ms. Watley, of, of issues that need to be, you know, addressed so that we can, you know, take some.
Now that we have a staff attorney?
I'm just saying. You know, for the record, this is another one of these policy issues that, you know, we need to correct.
All of our policies need to be looked at.
I don't know if this is more so a policy, but a form of procedure, process.
Administrative.
That administrative on that end, have a procedure instead of.
Might have to start with policy.
It's an issue that has to be addressed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, bring the motion to vote.
It's all information.
It's just information, so we're discussing.
No, we're going, we're just going to the action. So I'll. I move that we take the recommendation of the Audit and Finance Committee. Appoint Jennifer Burbage in one of our vacant slots.
Second.
He's got us down on R.
We don't have any more action items between here.
Yeah, right.
Everything else is information.
Everything was information down to R.
Mm-hmm. And this was put in under possible action items. A lot of these aren't action items.
Right. So we're now down to item 10R.
I have a motion on the table.
Any motion?
Yep, she got it.
That was me.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I guess we've already put it up. And the motion is approved.
I move that we accept the Audit and Finance Committee's recommendation to appoint Lori Carter to the Audit and Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the motion is approved. On to items, consent items.
There item R.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, you, will you, will you say that again? You were off speaker.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I, I misheard the original motion. I move that we reconsider item R.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ed, you said you misheard?
I, I misheard the for, well, now it's showing a difference on, 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 on board docs for me. I, I move that we reconsider the motion to appoint Ms. Burbage.
And I seconded.
Is there any discussion?
I apologize for that, friends. It's, there seems to be a disconnect between my board docs and y'all's. There, there seem to be out of order for me.
Mr. Johnson, can you clarify how reconsideration will work inside of Robert rules?
Motion for reconsideration has to be made by someone who voted in the affirmative on the original vote.
Does it take?
I don't recall how Mr. Kelly voted on the original vote.
Affirmative, is it simple?
You can then make a motion for reconsideration.
Is it a simple majority or is it super, uh, or?
Motion for reconsideration requires a majority vote to pass.
It's a simple majority?
Yes.
Okay.
So then we vote on that reconsideration then?
You have to vote on the motion to re, to reconsider the original vote.
Okay, and then we'd have to.
Vote reconsider passes, then the vote occurs again on the main motion, on the original motion.
Reconsideration, is it simple? Simple? It's just a redo?
I'm sorry.
Is it a simple majority?
I believe it's a simple majority. I don't think it requires two thirds.
I do believe it's two thirds.
I think it is.
Absolutely, actually, I know it's two thirds.
I'm sorry. It would require, it would require a two thirds.
Two thirds.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
Well, no, no, it requires a two thirds if, if the person making the, the motion to reconsider is not in the prevailing majority.
Cause we, we've done that before.
Simple majority, just the person.
Remember the principal?
That's correct.
Please hold off on that.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Second have to be by somebody who voted in positive?
The second does not have to be by someone who voted with the majority on the original motion.
This is the part where I get. When we're looking at Robert's, are we in discussion yet?
We already voted. Oh, we already, we're already in voting.
Did you call for discussion? Nay, I'm not in board docs anymore. Cause I think we just did something. Yes, because I think we just did something that's not right.
I have accidentally. Oh, I'm sorry. I have to remember me twice.
And the motion passes. So we will reconsider item 10R, which is the recommendation for the appointment of Ms. Burgess to serve on the Audit and Finance Committee. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to make it clear, to make it clear. Jennifer Burbage had the inmost votes out of the Audit and Finance Committee. She was our top vote getter out of the Audit and Finance Committee. It went six to one.
Swatley?
Yes, sir. I will then, I would also like to make it clear that as a board member, doing my due diligence, every single application was made available to us. And I looked over every application and I'm voting the way that I'm voting because I felt that there were other applicants that were much more qualified.
Hey, Dr. Temple?
I respect the Audit and Finance Committee's decision.
Ms. Roberson?
Yeah, I respect the Audit and Finance Committee recommendation. And I also think that we need to be mindful about the precedents that we are setting when we choose, pick and choose what committees we are going to uphold their recommendations and then others, we will vote them down. We are setting up bad precedents.
Ms. Bailey? Mr. Kelly?
I, I'd just like to point out that a recommendation is set with that and the ultimate decision is that of the board and not of a committee that serves at the pleasure of the board.
Excuse me, can I respond?
Ms. Roberson?
I just want to remind Mr. Kelly that when we had the naming of Johns Island School, you upheld that's the, the, the recommendation of the committee.
This is not that.
It was not, and it was not any different than what, what we are doing right now. So we have to be mindful of what we are showing the public.
Hack committee. There were names that didn't even apply, people on the hack committee.
That was on nominations.
My, my position is, is that when we brought it into Audit and Finance, a lot of us came in, like myself, looking, holding on to two names and I, I chose my top two names and then I was asked for a third. So I felt that the board should have had an opportunity to take a recommendation from the Audit and Finance Committee. Because I think a lot of, you know, without putting myself in their shoes and their opinions, a lot of people came into that meeting thinking that we were going with our, our top two. But we did pick up three and that's why I made the motion at Cal that I thought it would be prudent that the board had more options. But in respect to what Mr. Calhoun brought up, that motion was not made in Audit and Finance and Audit and Finance did not, you know, in respect to Audit and Finance. So I think that while the board has approved one name, I think that this second name, the second position should go back to Audit and Finance for a recommendation because they were not aware when they made their vote.
I would just like to, I'm sorry.
I, I'm finished.
You have one more comment also.
So I just would like to say, as you just said, most people came in with two.
Correct.
Jennifer Burbage was on each and every one of them except for yours.
No, she was on mine too.
Oh, so, so it was unanimous. And Audit and Finance, even though people came in with two, she was on each and every person's ballot when she came in with two, when people, when you said people come in with two.
Mr.?
Ms. Watley?
As was pointed out, our CFO has not even weighed in on, on, on the names that were brought forward. And I, I think that is a great disservice. The CFO should have definitely weighing in and, you know, perhaps he can, as he has recommended, a rubric.
And, and the other thing to clarify, Ms. Roberson, on the, the committee, there is precedent for what we have done. And the other thing to clarify, Ms. Roberson, on the committee, there is precedent for what we have done. In last year's budget, a budget came out of Audit and Finance, and when it, over time, the board had an opportunity to look at the budget, and when the budget came to a vote, the board voted against Audit and Finance's recommendation. I think when you're talking about community committees, I think, you know, there is a lot, when a lot of people put in a lot of time, that you do have to, you know, respect it, but still, even with that, there is some say that the board, I think the board voted, not so much as the committee, it was one of the factors, but I think that there were a lot of factors that were, you know, taken into that vote, and I think you do have to give committees the right, and that's why I feel sending it back to Audit and Finance is the right step.
Still have to make this vote because technically this vote did not happen yet, so we still have to take this vote. Yeah, we still have to retake this vote. So whether if it goes down.
That's correct. We're speaking, we're speaking as if, right.
You're absolutely.
Well, I'd like to say, I mean, the Audit and Finance Committee weighed in, waited until a second time to examine all of the applications, and when you tell me that this person was on all six committee members' list, I think that's very significant, and so.
Seven.
Huh?
Seven.
All right, so seven. So that is very, that's very significant, and these people on the Audit and Finance Committee have been selected by this board. And so I think that carries a lot of weight in terms of their decision-making, and I think we should respect.
And yet, the appointment still comes down to the approval of the board and individual board members looking over resumes and voting yes or no, according to their conscience. And I voted mine.
I'm going to limit debate and bring the motion up for vote.
Did you change it?
You guys are going to hate me.
Over here, let's go.
In full disgrace, I'm going to ask for a motion to reconsider my vote. I made a mistake.
I second.
Okay.
This is.
I'm sorry, this is.
But I'm sorry.
It's late.
I voted. I made a mistake. I know.
I second it. Let's just vote on it real quick and get it over with.
No, this is.
Yes, it's been moved, it's been seconded, let's just vote on it.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Argy.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
We just went through this.
I'm done.
How many times can we reconsider the same motion?
Can you bring it up for vote?
We've already reconsidered because of volume. Now reconsidering for what reason? Mr. Kowalski is sitting.
I made a mistake.
Playing with the vote. That's what we're doing. We're playing with a vote. You see it's not going the way that you want it, so you want to keep changing it. We cannot keep doing it.
Changed it at the Cal meeting. If we were voting on two, we had four. So we're playing.
Reconsideration.
Well, I mean, we are kind of getting bogged down in the exact same discussion we just had back there.
Judgment on that, this is a, that's a very unusual circumstance, where the question is, how many times can a body reconsider a motion? Certainly, you can reconsider it once if it's on an prevailing side, but my instinct tells me that, and I would need to take a look at, just confirm that they ought not to be, or shouldn't be multiple.
Because, sir, the motion is not changing.
Well, I think the grounds, the grounds were just, I made a mistake.
The motion is remaining the same. It's the vote that wants to change, not the motion. Because we are saying a motion to reconsider, but we are putting the same motion.
But you have to look at what the grounds for reconsideration are. And the reconsiderations are if you made a mistake, or if you have new information, knowing the rules pretty clever.
No, Robert Rules.
That's not the way we intended to vote.
And I debated in the opposite of it.
The, the, we've all had to live with the wrong vote. I don't think.
I just, before we, we're still inside of debate for this motion to reconsider right now, I just want to put this out there. Give me a second, pulling it back up. A motion to reconsider is useful when a board realizes that they might have made a decision without proper debate, which we just had a lot of it.
Yep.
Or if information is received later in the meeting that impacts an earlier decision, not the vote.
Right. Keep going.
For a thorough discussion on all the intricacies of the motion to reconsider, including how it is handled differently in a committee, see Robert Rules move forward from there. So not just seeing what the vote is.
It's the motion.
If you have more information, we used that a couple of times before. If we have more information that we did not have prior to the debate, that's what we're looking at. What more information did you not have for the last time, or the last two times we've done this?
They're fine, wrong. I made a mistake, and Robert Rule says I can't correct my mistake. I will abide by your, abide by the vote. That's all. It's that simple. Robert Rule says I cannot correct a mistake by a motion for reconsideration, then the vote stands unfortunate, by the way, and I will have to live with it.
But you can reconsider. I think we need this motion right here, then.
We're inclined to make such a motion. You could make a motion to rescind the previous action, which would, in effect, make the previous vote as if it did not happen and would allow for an additional motion to be made.
That might be the one.
And the reason we resent, the reason for recension.
A mistake.
I mean.
Is that a reason for recension?
Yeah.
He hit the button, he hit the wrong button.
Done with this.
Oh, come on.
No, it's not an, oh, come on.
No, this is nuts.
Oh, come on.
Let's not. We have legal counsel here. It's just that's.
Mr. Kowalski, just making sure you heard. Did you hear my statement, sir?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did, but we have a motion on the table, so I would have to take a friendly motion to rescind.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to your motion, Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Can we?
I'm sorry, I thought.
Can we?
Waiting for Mr. Johnson.
So currently, as I understand, that there is a motion, a second motion for reconsideration.
Absolutely, based upon a mistake.
Yeah.
Not on a vote.
There's no motion to rescind at this point. There's just a motion.
Right. At this point, you're just looking at the motion for reconsideration based upon a mistake.
Give me one second, if you would.
Trustees, just so you're aware, I'm going to call Mr. Kelly now from my phone, and I believe Mrs. McKinney has joined. All right, thank you, sir.
Well. My quick perusal of Robert's rules does not reveal any rule that says you cannot have a multiple motion, or that a second motion for reconsideration cannot be made. In other words, it appears to me from my reading of the rules that the second motion for reconsideration can be made.
It can?
Can, C-A-M.
I mean, I could understand, not by the same person, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. In other words, I see nothing in the rules in my quick perusal that says that only one motion for reconsideration can be made with respect to a particular issue.
When it says a party, they're talking about the individual.
I'm sorry.
A party can only file one motion for reconsideration, so.
A voting member, I think, is what that party refers to. In other words, the same member cannot make multiple motions to reconsider, but a different member can make a, another motion, if you will.
I'd ask all board members.
I'm sorry, if we find, after more research, that the information is different, then we can bring it back.
We'll have to revisit this, yeah.
Make sure you read the motion carefully before you vote.
This is the reconsideration.
This is exactly what we just did.
Reconsideration.
I mean, I'm going on about 24 hours of not. I'm ready, I'm going to bed.
And the motion passes. Okay.
I don't see her on.
Yeah, she's not on. Ms. McKinney, are you on Zoom? I just can't vote. But she has to, we have to hear her voice.
If she's on Zoom, she should be able to get into Board Docs.
If she's on Zoom, she should be able to talk. Ms. McKinney, can you be heard? Can you hear us? I don't see her.
You see her on.
Is she on? All right.
On mute.
I move to appoint.
Pam, you're on mute.
I move to appoint Jennifer Burbage to the Audit and Finance Committee per the Audit and Finance Committee's recommendation.
I explain.
You guys want us here all night long? He's wanting to bring Jennifer Burbage back.
It's a two-part motion. You reconsider, you have to put the motion back up. It's a two-part motion.
Is there a second?
I did. Second.
Any discussion?
I think we've already heard that the Audit and Finance Committee voted strongly for this candidate, and I will support her.
No.
Do we need to discuss this?
Motion is to.
Appoint Jennifer Burbage, the same motion that was had to be reconsidered over and over again.
Yes.
Okay, you're not supposed to talk during voting. May.
And the motion fails. Onto item 11, it's the consent items. Items A, B, C, and D. E and E.
No, we.
Oh, no, we've already, yeah, we moved, that's all right.
So, we only have one person?
We only, yeah, we have to, so it goes back to Audit and Finance to bring in next, another candidate.
I'd like to make a motion.
Going up to upcoming meetings on item 12, we have the June 4th Audit and Finance Meeting, June 10th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and June 24th Board Meeting. Have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move.
Second, we are adjourned.